Number seven, three. Uh, two order. Uh, this is being conducted in a hybrid fashion as is, um, been enabled by the governor's executive order and legislative action. Uh, first order of business is pledge of allegiance. Charlie, which you normally do lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Father, and to the Father which he stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, item two, public forum. Um, anyone want to address the board in public forum? Bo?
Yes, I'll, I'll start.
Come on up and name an address for the record. You've.
I stand here.
You can wherever, wherever you'd like.
Okay. My name is Bo Hune. I, I live at, uh, four sixty-five Clabber Hill Road here in Guilford. I'm, uh, introducing the question of a ban on retail marijuana, uh, as requested by Guilford Day. Uh, we have other members of the group who will chip in, uh, 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 different aspects of the points we wanted to make, but I'm to speak about, uh, the fact that we have a problem here that I, I don't think many people in Guilford, uh, many parents, many kids, even the five selectmen truly understand. I think, uh, we have something coming at us that's a really very serious problem. Maybe not as serious as COVID, but, uh, I would put it on your attention level is something that deserves that kind of focus, uh, because this is aimed at kids. And, uh, we currently lose kids in the town of Guilford. And it's pretty clear we're going to lose more in the future unless we as a community do something, uh, truly significant to stop it. Now, uh, I'm sure all of you are very familiar with the recent marijuana legislation that cleared the, uh, legislature in Hartford. Uh, most of you probably think of it as, uh, a fairly benign substance, but what you really ought to be thinking of is Shatter and Wax and Dab and, uh, the, the edibles and the other concentrates, the, the vaping of marijuana that, uh, is coming. Because marijuana in the states that it's legalized is being sold in concentrated form more and more and more. It's about fifty percent of the product mix in Cal- in Colorado now. And, uh, I, I don't have the data on other states, but it's, it's going to be like that. So if you don't know what Shatter and Wax and Dab and, and vaping of marijuana is, you really ought to go online, go to some of the YouTube videos that are out there on social media and get, and get familiar with it. It's, uh, a very, very different thing than marijuana that was around back in the seventies and eighties and nineties. Uh, originally, the potency was, well, it was as low as point two percent, so point two of one percent, uh, THC, and, uh, probably in the early years it ran up to ten percent. Uh, now it's more like twenty-five percent and, uh, the wisdom of our state legislators set the potency limit for, for the flower product at thirty percent. So, uh, that's what we're talking about. The concentrates are, uh, up in the range of sixty, seventy, eighty percent. So, uh, that's a, a very, very, very different thing than point two of one percent or even ten percent. Uh, Guilford parents and Guilford kids have no idea that this is coming. Uh, it, it's something that, you know, I've, I've been working on this drug issue, uh, ten, twelve, fifteen years, uh, on, on the issue of trying to separate Guilford out from the national culture of teen substance abuse. And, and, uh, I think Lisa will talk a bit about the success that we've had here in town. So I, I've spent a lot of time learning about drugs, talking to treatment people. I knew nothing about Shatter. I just, I, I barely heard of it until maybe a year ago. Uh, the reference in our letter to the, the Ben Court YouTube talk, uh, I'd really, really like you to look at that. You know, you, you don't have to listen to the whole hour, but take ten, fifteen minutes and, uh, step through the, uh, there are certain points that we said you can look at this piece, then look at that piece. Uh, he is a fabulous guy. He's known nationally in treatment circles, uh, for the Phoenix program. He started, he was an addict himself, a very, very knowledgeable Colorado guy. And he says, "We don't begin to understand the impact that these highly potent concentrates are going to have on people." Uh, now, why am I talking about all of this in connection with a retail ban? The, the, the reason is that, um, I think we need to do something truly visible to get to parents and kids. You know, if you hold a forum, you call a forum and invite the public to come, advertise it really, really, really well, uh, contact groups like churches and ask them to send people to the forum. We might get lucky and get a hundred people, a hundred and fifty people. You know, you, you, it is very hard to get the public to come to things. We have stories in the Courier, uh, or in, in the Shoreline Times, uh, you know, people, people don't read them. Uh, and the challenge we've got is educating all of our kids, all of our parents to what's at stake here. And I think this is one step that the selectmen can take to lead us in the community to say to our people, "Look, this is a real problem that Guilford needs to tackle and to win on." Uh, now, the other little piece that I was going to talk about was the health risk. Um, you all probably are going to think I'm, uh, kind of a fanatic on this and way out there on the edge somewhere. Um, there's very little that's been in the national and state media about the risks of marijuana for teens. Uh, a lot of us, uh, actually not me, but a lot, a lot of people around use marijuana when they were kids and got through just fine. And most kids still today are able to use, and there's no long-term devastating consequence. But for some people, it really is devastating, life destroying. And it's not just the marijuana itself, but the crowd of people that get in it together and lead each other astray. Uh, I have a daughter who got involved with drugs as a high school sophomore. That's why I'm involved in this stuff, you know? And I, Carrie suffered horrible consequences and our, our family did. We, we felt enormous pain. Carrie dug her way out. She's done great. She's a, uh, uh, physician's assistant doing terrific stuff up in Vermont, wonderful mother, great kids. But she has friends that she led astray that didn't make it. You know, a kid who ended up in jail down in Bridgeport, smart, funny, good little Guilford kid. Life destroyed. She has another friend who ended up a hooker on Dixwell Avenue, New Haven. Uh, this just, you know, it's, it's awful what happens in those small groups and it leads into other drugs. So, a real problem, real kids, lives getting destroyed at work here. And, and I don't want you to take my word for it. Look at some of the science. Uh, in this package, we have the Surgeon General Advisory on marijuana use in the developing brain. Uh, take a look at that. If, if you think, uh, this is a benign substance, on the, uh, third page of this document, there's just a paragraph on marijuana use during adolescence. So this, this isn't Bo Hune talking. This, this is the Surgeon General of the U.S. and, uh, he, he says in here, "The human brain continues to develop from before birth into the mid twenties and is vulnerable to the effects of addictive substances. Frequent use during adolescence is associated with changes in the areas of the brain involved in attention, memory, decision-making, and motivation. Deficits in attention, memory have been detected in marijuana-using teens even after a month of abstinence, impaired learning in adolescence. Chronic use is linked to declines in IQ, school performance that jeopardizes professional and social achievements and life satisfaction. Increased rates of school absence and dropout as well as suicide attempts. Risk for, in the early onset of psychotic disorders such as schizophrenia. Risk for psychotic disorders increases with frequency of use, potency of the marijuana product, and as the age at first use decreases. And then, uh, other substance use." So, uh, this is a real problem. This is coming at us because of the legalization, uh, issue, and it's something that we as members of Guilford Day can't solve for the community. This is going to take leadership from the selectmen, from the Board of Ed, from Youth and Family Services, from the library, uh, a park and rec, from the police. It's going to take involvement of groups like Rotary, the churches, uh, the PTOs. But this is, I think, a, a, uh, truly worthy issue for the selectmen to, uh, be dealing with, to be discussing, to be, uh, hopefully creating controversy over and drawing attention to. So thanks very much. Lisa, you're.
You can see, you don't have to see it. You're more comfortable seeing it, I said.
Super.
Sorry, Bo, I didn't hear you say anything. Just asleep, just asleep.
I'm Lisa At, one ninety-seven Village Pond Road. And, um, what I want to draw your attention to is this sheet which shows Guilford data since we first started surveying students grade seven through twelve back in twenty-ten. And at the time we started, Guilford statistics for marijuana use were uh, worse than state and national average. I had heard just sort of from other people that were working in other coalitions that Guilford was known as a pop town. And, um, through a lot of different efforts, certainly Guilford Day, but a lot of effort throughout the community, uh, we've been able to really, really improve our numbers. And, um, right now, our, our data is better than the state and national average. So that's something we should really be proud of. Um, but if you look at the perception of risk, um, for, um, and, and what I was talking about was our thirty-day use. Um, if you look at the perception of risk for, uh, our four core measures, in general, kids really do think of, um, the, those four substances as risky, but you'll also notice there's a much more dramatic drop in their perception of risk of marijuana. Um, the others are in the eighties and nineties. And interestingly, uh, over the years, kids have really thought of cigarettes as the most risky, um, you know, that, that the media campaigns have worked. Um, and same with alcohol. Mad campaigns have worked. And, um, if you talk to a kid, they may not always make the right decision, but they know that drinking and driving is dangerous. However, due to their brain development, they don't automatically make the jump that many adults would that marijuana and driving under the influence is dangerous. Um, they, they don't see the same risks that other, um, substances evoke. And so that's, that's why this is, I mean, that's really at the heart of why this is such an issue, that we need to raise people's awareness that this is not Woodstock weed that's been, um, uh, legalized. You know, that it really is something that deserves attention and that parents and families need to be talking about. There needs to be conversation throughout the community so that people understand, um, what we are dealing with. The law is, I don't know, like something like four hundred pages or something like that. And so the average person doesn't have any idea what the intricacies are of it. Um, and then if you look at the, uh, perception of peer disapproval, that's the other area. Um, you know, it, the perception of parental disapproval is not as dramatic a number. Um, but the perception of peer disapproval, that's another area where, um, it, it's, it's interesting to me that, you know, more kids think that their friends will disapprove of them drinking than of using marijuana.
That is, that is interesting. Uh, Lisa, if you would mind, just a question.
Yeah, absolutely.
The perception of parental disapproval, it narrows that gap significantly between alcohol and the perception of risk. So is that, uh, our parents not saying the right message is, um, you know, that, that gap is, is, is much more narrow. It's ninety-two or ninety percent based on two thousand eighteen or two thousand twenty, um, versus the perception of, uh, risk with alcohol at five, ninety-five, uh, versus ninety. So, kind of a, kind of an interesting dichotomy. They know that their parents disapprove of it.
Right.
Which theoretically should be the first thing that someone turns to is, you know, and, and, you know, again, peer pressure being, peer pressure is a different story, but if your parents are telling you that it's wrong, why, why, why is, any reason why that there's that, that dip in active perception of risk?
It actually, it's really interesting. Adolescents, their job is to become independent of the adults in their lives. And if they didn't have that physiologically built into them, it would be way too scary to go out and form your own identity and to forge the path. And so what's going on with all of their brain development is that they've got a fear, your brain sort of, uh, matures from back to front. They've got a very, very powerful emotional system. Um, and, um, their prefrontal cortex is still developing up until their early to mid twenties. So, they may know all the right answers. They may have heard all of it from the adults in their lives. But that urge to go out and, and, um, strike their own path is very, very, very strong. And so that has a lot to do with what the numbers are. And then there's also the element of a lot of parents think, um, that, you know, my kid knows, you know, that I disapprove. My, my kid knows what my values are. My kid knows, you know, what's right and wrong. And what I've found, yeah, I love my kids to death, but I can tell them the same thing forty-six times and they'll hear it on maybe the forty-seventh. Um, you just have to like hit it at the right time. And, um, so there's, there's a lot going on there with kids' development and, um, you know, all of that brain stuff. And so it's just, it, it's really sending a message over and over and over and over again. And, you know, some of the time I'll use humor with them, some of the time, you know, like it'll be a big conversation. A lot of the time it's just something in, you know, quick passing. It doesn't need to be a really formal, you know, message, but they just have to keep hearing it over and over and over and over again.
So, okay. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Any else?
Peter Palumbo, one twenty, Lover's Lane. Um, I don't, I don't have much more to share than Bo and Lisa, and I've been doing, I've been involved with Day since the beginning. You know, the old joke, you miss a meeting and all of a sudden you're nominated. Well, that was me. But I've teamed up with Lisa and Bo, and I will just share a couple of, uh, pieces in the ten, twelve years that we've been doing this that I've found to be really important to keep in mind is, um, this is awareness. And, you know, Day and Youth and Family Services and any other organization, um, the thing that has made what we do um, really fun and exciting to do is that the, our community loves the idea that there are people caring for their children in the community. And that's, that's a big part of what we do, and that's all we're asking is for, um, the awareness in the community. Um, way back when medical marijuana was going to be legalized for medical use and we were talking about, um, you know, where it would go. The kids on our Day Committee at that time, their biggest concern, the, the, the biggest part of, of the thought of the, of the medical marijuana coming to Guilford was how, you know, how can we slow that down? Even though we all kind of agreed medical marijuana was, was good in a lot of cases, the kids felt it was a gateway into exactly what's happening right now. And when we went to the, um, zoning board meeting that evening, um, it was, it was said by our youth leader at the time from, this is not me, this is a teenage girl talking, is that, that we are looking to you all to protect us. And a lot of times kids can't get that out, and they look to the adults in the community for that, and maybe not their own parents. I mean, sometimes we struggle with the work that we do in the community with back and forth of parents having their own different belief systems, and we're going by data that we have. We're just trying to get that information out to people. And hopefully, like you all are our leaders in the community, that you'll, you'll take, take a look at that stuff and help us with this message. Don't know where it's going to go. We're fighting a big power here, right? So I just, I just wanted to share that piece about our involvement in the community for care of the kids in this community.
Thank you, Peter. Anybody else? Awesome. Thank you for taking the time to, uh, to share your thoughts with us and the data. Um, it's something we'll be discussing a little bit later on the agenda. So thank you very much for, for your input. Appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you for having us.
Oh, my pleasure.
We might just, uh, introduce Carson, who is one of our youth leaders. Um, he's an Eagle Scout.
Yep.
And, uh, Susan White is the, uh, Prevention Coordinator, I believe is the correct title, if that makes sense, from Youth and Family Services, uh, who's been just a wonderful help to us. I'm sure you all know Dave, Dave Knapp, who is one of our strongest members.
Proud Wesleyan alum.
Thank you. Thank you all for taking your, taking the time. Need a much wider, much wider step up. Thank you, Peter, for being the safety coordinator.
Bye-bye. Yes, no, no.
Okay, all right. That's, uh, the August sixteenth, twenty-twenty-one regular meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
End of second?
Second.
Comments, questions, changes, just edits? Give me none. Uh, we try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, just the names, closes, here's none, very hot. Three dot two, the minutes from the August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one special meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
End of second. Thank you. Just a quick comment. I thought that meeting went, uh, A, went a lot longer than we thought it was going to originally, but I just want to thank everybody again. And I think, I think that meeting was very, very effective and had a significant amount of value for me. So, uh, thanks for everyone's participation in that one. Um, any further questions or comments or changes, edits, et cetera?
How did it work out when people that needed the deadline extended?
Um, actually, uh, they wound up getting back to us the following day and said they weren't, weren't going to participate. So, anybody else needed to take? Nobody else. We're all set. Yep. And I think that it will be filed tomorrow, should be in a newspaper and local circulation as well. So, uh, full steam.
Yeah, I'm glad we gave the opportunity and the.
I, I did, I did too. I mean, I think it was an easy compromise at that point, um, even though I think some of us made the point that it had a significant number of opportunities to participate in this, but, uh, last chance is last chance.
Yeah.
So it's not the central.
Yeah, and we did, I mean, we draw, we can. But I wanted to thank all of you that was.
There was, there was a lot of interest in the statute that discusses what happens afterwards. And I think that that's here in the minutes, in the state, so.
So.
At ourselves.
Okay. All right, we have a, a motion. Will we try your minds, all in favor?
All right. I, I have a partial recusal. Okay, I was there for half the meeting. And I was specifically there through, uh, virtually through the entire discussion and vote on the, uh, water assessment portion. So, I've improved that portion of the minutes, but I recuse from the remaining.
Well said. Thank you, though. Um, all right, that motion carries. Um, move on to item four, Board of Education Director of Facilities, Cliff Gurnum. Cliff, good morning.
Good morning. How are you doing today?
Um, so we're here to consider and take possibility on a change orders for the Guilford High School track and field replacement project to H.I. Stone and son. Cliff?
Correct. And, uh, before I start that, uh, Matt, you were also going to add that second, um, item I had to the agenda.
Yep.
And I'll, I'll take you through the track and field first, and then, uh, hopefully you can add that second, uh, item for that other change order. So, uh, what we have here before you is a, uh, essentially a combination of five, uh, PCOS for the Guilford High School track and field. So, there were five, uh, sub-change orders, uh, that consisted of items such as additional fencing. Uh, we had to revise the logo and lettering, uh, based upon the new, uh, logo that the, uh, high school now has. Um, we have also ran into some, uh, rock that was in the D zones and goal post, uh, footings. So we had to, uh, hammer that out. And then, um, we also made some changes from asphalt to concrete to, um, uh, change that material to match the new sidewalk that's going in, in front of the bleachers. So, uh, those are the five different, uh, PCOS that are underneath this, uh, change order number one that we're looking to have approved. Uh, it's been reviewed by both the engineer and the Standing Building Committee, and, uh, it was recommended for approval in the amount of fifty-eight thousand, sixty dollars and forty-nine cents awarded to, uh, H.I. Stone, uh, the present contractor on the project. And the funds will come out of the bond from, uh, fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, which has approximately two hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars to left in that remaining.
Thank you, Cliff. Uh, so, uh, is there a motion to approve the, uh, change order, the fifty-eight thousand, sixty dollars and forty-nine cents to H.I. Stone and son?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Uh, Cliff, just the first question comes to mind. Uh, this is well within the range of the contingencies, uh, that we had for this project?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Uh, on, on the same topic, but, uh, maybe not specific to the change order. Uh, I was, had a chance of, uh, to be out there last week looking at the, the, the the progress that has been made on it. Uh, question came to mind. Did we extend the number of lanes in the track to, are there going to be more lanes, um, than there were previously?
No, we were unable to add additional lanes, uh, due to various restrictions. Uh, we, we did, uh, try to expand around the track a little bit, uh, specifically in front of the bleachers to ensure that, uh, the spacing between the uh, last lane and the fencing, uh, there's a required distance, uh, to make sure it met those requirements. That's all.
Okay. I, I thought there was a little, I thought it was a little bit wider, but, uh, not to the degree that we could, uh, have eight lanes like, uh, we, we've been hopeful for. Okay.
Correct.
Thank you. Any other questions? No, let me try your minds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, refused, hearing none, motion carries. All right, do we have a motion to add an agenda item? For the Board of Education, Cliff Gurnum presenting to discuss and take possible action on change order number four. The Baldwin Middle School HVAC Phase Two Project. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second, second. Let me try your minds. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, refused, hearing none, motion carries. Cliff?
Yes, so this change order is for the Baldwin Middle School HVAC Phase Two Project. Essentially what it is, is we had a mounting structure that was already on the roof used for the old cooling tower. We were going to reuse that for this new ERV, which is similar to an air handler. However, when they went to. Scrape it and paint it and recondition it, they found that the structure itself was no longer structurally sound. So we're replacing that structure and actually moving it to a new location to put this new ERV on the roof. So this has had actually extensive review between the Standing Building Committee and the engineers to really find the best location. In the least costly option that we could find to do. And that is this change order in front of you now. So the Standing Building Committee has recommended to move forward. With this change order number four and the amount of twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars and twenty-four cents. For save more heating and cooling. And these funds will come out of the bonded referendum from twenty twenty twenty-one that still has about two hundred and five thousand dollars in it.
Thank you, Cliff. Is there a motion?
I'll, I'll make the motion.
Second?
So, yeah, I do have a question there, Cliff. So I gather this is a project that's underway. They got up, they found that the bracket or the mounting structure was in. So this is, once this gets approved, this is going to continue to move forward quickly?
Correct. We're looking at getting this done as soon as possible to get that last piece of equipment. Installed and online and that would pretty much complete the Baldwin Phase Two Project, yes.
Yeah, there's, there's a statement that the change order will increase the contract time by a hundred and sixty-three days. That was kind of concerning.
Yes.
What is happening?
It, it shouldn't take that long to do. We already have the ERV on site. It's sitting there. So it's just a magical, a matter of scheduling the. Crane and getting it dropped on the roof once we get the new structure in place, so.
And is that something that has to happen when no one's at the building?
We will work around the, yeah, the students and the staff. So most likely it will happen after school hours or on a Saturday. They'll bring the crane in or they, they may even come in first thing in the morning at six in the morning and drop it on the roof at that point in time. But I'll schedule that with the school, yes.
Okay. Anything further? No. Let me try your minds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, refused, hearing none, motion carries. Cliff, thank you very.
I actually have another question for Cliff. Since I drive by Guilford Lakes every day, twice a day, what's going on with the paving?
So, yeah, we did have a little kink in the, the paving due to all the rain last week. So they're working on putting down the base today. They're going to hopefully get that all installed. And then potentially either tomorrow night or Saturday, they'll put the final course down. So we are a little behind schedule on that, but we hope to have a base course in place for the starter school tomorrow.
Okay. All right. Cliff, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, item five, building officials, Kim Norman Rosetham and Health Director Sonia Moreno discussing take possible action on the purchase of two Ford F-150 trucks for the building and health departments. Off a state contract number nineteen PSX zero one six one. Thank you both for the memos that you had provided to us. I think during budget season, we had gone through the need for some of these vehicles. This is already budgeted funds, if I'm not mistaken.
Good morning, everyone. It's Kimberly Norman Rose. Dan. Some of the funds is budgeted, but the amount of the truck or the vehicle that's going to be available for us to purchase the end of this month. It's a little bit hot, it's higher than the amount that we are budgeted for.
Okay. Yeah, looks, let's see, it's some of the, the options, it looks like, right? The, the plus package and the trailer tow package, so. And I just, just so you know, I had some conversations with Ralph Casey because I understand you, you have been working with Ralph to identify potential vehicles. And one of the reasons you're, you're looking at the, the pickup truck is for clearance when you're on job sites. But there is also, I think I saw somewhere that, or at least was told by Ralph that you're looking to put in. Sort of the steps that make it easier to get in and out of the vehicles. Wouldn't that impact your ground clearance?
Not for the step.
What's that?
Not, that's just a step for us to get into the vehicle. That wouldn't have any ways regarding the ground clearance that we need.
Okay, all right, just those, because those are lower than the carriage, right?
No, the carriage will still be high, but this just be a step for us to get in. So that wasn't at that part.
Okay. And, and as you, as, as you are aware, we have been pushing to have more. Environmentally friendly vehicles. In fact, the vehicle we just purchased for the selectmen's office is a hybrid. And that is, it was a Ford Escape and that, that, that vehicle, as I said, is a hybrid. Have you, and, and has, what is it, intelligent all-wheel drive? Have you guys looked at any of the alternatives on, on more environmentally friendly vehicles?
The cost is usually a lot more. And when I spoke with Mr. Casey, he stated the only vehicles that he, that the dealership he was dealing with. He said the only vehicles that were going to be in, in September was those trucks. He said they were nothing else. He was getting, I believe it was eight in and that was it. For the rest of the year. So that's the reason why we were picking those trucks.
Okay, so, so to the, to, to the underlying question, though, you're not, we're not looking at. Fuel efficient vehicles or not, you know, the hybrids because they don't meet your need or because they're not available immediately?
Well, financially, we don't have the budget for it. I mean, if there was something within the budget that we have, we don't have a problem with it. And it had the capability that we need regarding our job sites, we have no problem with it. But as far as like Mr. Casey was dealing with the dealerships that he was speaking to, the only one that had trucks that's going to be available this year was, was these trucks.
Sounds like the need is pretty immediate based on these memos.
Just aren't available.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I sort of see this application being typically what you're saying, and I would be wildly in support of that, but this particular application. Given the vocations that they're going to and the amount that they drive business-wise, I don't think, I don't think it's, I think it makes sense.
Okay. Have you had conversations with the finance director as to where we would find the additional funds over what was budgeted in, in the fiscal year?
I did speak with Ms. Mary Jane and she did state that we will work it out to try to figure out the funds where they would come from.
Okay. All right. Is there, does anyone want to make a motion to approve the purchase of these two vehicles? In the amount of.
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and ten dollars from Jangris Ford off this, which is coming off the state contract.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second her.
Any further comments or questions? No. I, I will support this for the very reasons that were mentioned a couple of minutes ago. But continue to be frustrated by the lack of. Hybrid vehicles or more fuel efficient vehicles for municipal use. And will, I, I, I think. Henceforth, we're going to try, try, try to enforce a little bit more diligently the need to assess and, and look at those types of vehicles. So let me try your minds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, refused, hearing none, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can we take a look at any other vehicles that are to be purchased in this fiscal year? I mean, the problem here is the lead time, so maybe the sooner we get ball rolling, the better, trying to accomplish that.
Absolutely. We'll go back and take a look at, you know, the capital budget, Altesca, very jingling, pulling that list together and then work with Ralph Casey to, to, to source the. And new vehicles are going to be a problem.
Yeah, it's terrible.
And I understand that, you know, the. Supply chain issues and everything, but you know. It just doesn't seem to me to make sense for trucks for inspection purposes. I mean, is, is it they're carrying stuff around?
Right.
You know, I, I would think a midsize SUV would actually be more appropriate, frankly, but. It's a supply thing, I said.
Okay, well, thank you both. Thank you. They're gone already. They got their vehicles and left.
And I also just, not to beat this issue to death, I mean, it's a truck, they're going to be using it. I, I, it is a six liter, I mean, a six liter, a six cylinder engine. It's a little, I'm just sort of looking at some of these Ford sites. It is a little more fuel efficient than the traditional pickup truck. There's still.
Yeah, I'm just thinking of especially the, the health factory, you know, you talk to restaurants in downtown area.
Right.
Well, some, some.
There's a lot of new construction too, in the memo. She's claiming.
If each user needs the truck sometimes, maybe we should be getting one truck. And one other vehicle.
Um, the building, building officials out pretty much every day, all day, all day long.
But always with the truck. I mean, it's two people, sometimes they need a truck, sometimes they don't, maybe they could, I don't know.
Well, I think that's the only vehicle we have for, for building, right?
Apparently they use it, they use it.
We're purchasing, sorry if I misunderstood, so we're purchasing.
Two trucks.
Two trucks.
One for building, one for health.
Right, so I can't leave out one truck.
And one.
And one other vehicle, hybrid, a semi-sized vehicle, and then Ford.
But when I was just looking at Sonia's memo, I didn't realize this, the, the thing about wastewater soil testing. Is done sometimes on unfinished lots and places. So I guess she's going in rough. I don't mean rough, scary, I mean, rough terrain areas, just like the building official is.
Right, but unless they're both using, having a truck full time. Maybe two that can do that. It'd be savings and accomplish our other goal.
Hey.
I mean, even, you know, one, one of the plants shut down manufacturing altogether, except for trucks and SUVs. Because they're the most marketable, right?
Anyway.
So, and like you point as well, thank you, Matt. I think, you know, on balance, we're going to try and push in that direction. I'm as big a proponent as possible. I kind of see enough of, of the exception in this circumstance to kind of justify it. We might be able to thread the needle a little bit, but.
Well, we've already had a motion.
We're there.
There we go.
Don't think fast enough sometimes.
Okay, let's move on to item six. Parks and Recreation Director Rick Maynard considering to take possible action on capital equipment purchases. Rick? Good morning.
Good morning, everybody. Just a comment on that, that, the F-150 that I got a couple of years ago, it's called an EcoBoost.
Yeah.
So it does help because it stopped, every time I come to a stop sign or a traffic light, the engine shuts off. So it, you know, it doesn't idle. So it does save a little bit on gas and pollution and all that kind of stuff. In fact, the first time, I didn't know that's what it did and. When it stops, it kind of like, just like a little bit of a jolt. I thought somebody rear ended me. So I bumped the back of my bumper and then I realized it was the motor shuts off and it just goes on when you hit the gas pedal again and start up. So it's something to consider anyway. You'll be, well, one good thing is that, one of the things I'm asking for, it doesn't have any gas, it's a trailer, so that's good. I, I got four things, Matt, so I don't know if you want to approve each one separately because they're on different Sourcewell contracts, or you want me to go through the whole list, or how do you want to do that?
Once you go through the whole list and we'll use the, we'll use the memo that you sent to me as the basis for approving the motion.
Okay, all right. Well, the first one I mentioned, the Grounds Master mower. I, I'd like you to approve the twenty-seven thousand, nine, nine, six. We might be able to get a demo model, which we, we actually have in our possession right now to try out. For twenty-five thousand, five hundred. The company dropped it off on. Thursday, Fri- Friday, I think, last week and. We already saw there's some, there were some issues with it, some, you know, dents and scratches and. There's an issue and a couple of things that are not good with it, so. We may go with that one, but the guys want to try and make sure it works okay. So if you don't mind approving the higher amount, but we might go with the used one for twenty-five thousand. But we, we got to test it out, make sure it's okay. So we're going to request the twenty-seven thousand, nine, nine, six, fifty-four, and that's from Turf Products. And you see the Sourcewell contract number there?
Rick, Rick, can I ask you, is this handy? So it's a demo. So when you said used, that whatever is wrong with it or not wrong with it is just from it being dropped off at different places for people to evaluate? Was it ever like in service?
Yeah, it, it, it's called a demo, but yes, it was actually purchased by another town. They decided they didn't want that unit. There's about seventy hours of, of use on it. They decided they didn't want that unit. They bought it, they gave it back or took, you know, the, the company took it back and they gave them a, a different unit, a different type of mower. So it had about seventy hours of use. It's not a real lot. It's probably. Two weeks, maybe three weeks, you know, who knows? So it's got some use, but there are, there are some minor issues with it. The, the guys just want to try it out. We got it late Friday. They're going to take it out today and mow with it. And if we think it's, you know, acceptable, then we'll, we'll go with that one, you know, we'll save the money.
And it comes with all the same warranties as the new one would?
I did request on this, and yes, same warranty. Yep.
All right.
The other one is the Whacker Newsen roller. Again, state bid there, state contract, and the vendor's Able Tool and Equipment. That's forty-nine thousand, forty-eight dollars. And these are, by the way, these are all in our budget, but the prices are all a little different, but I can tell you about that when I go through all of them. The John Deere fifty, fifty-five E tractor with canopy and a bucket and fork attachment. That's forty-one thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars for G and H equipment, again, under a Sourcewell contract. And the last one is the tilt trailer. The trailer is for that roller. We need a tilt trailer to get the roller onto it, to be able to move it. Eight thousand, four ninety-nine from Trailer Depot. None of these are state bids. Osprey, you see, there's a little bit less. But the earliest they could get that is January, Freight, Freight Depot. The Trailer Depot is, we could pick it up whenever you approve it. We can do this next week if you approve us going that way. And it's only. Very small difference, right?
Like forty dollars.
Forty dollars difference, yeah. So we request purchasing it from the Trailer Depot for that eight thousand, four ninety-nine. So we, we, like everybody, we're, we're a little bit over budget on all these things, but what Mary Jane and I did, we carried over thirty thousand dollars from last year's operating budget. To carry over to cover this. And I think our overage is going to be about twenty-six thousand. So we'll still, we'll have four thousand, four thousand less than what we carried over. So we have enough money to cover this.
What is the roller used for? I mean, I, I know some fields and everything, but.
So, so we use it on, a, a lot on the athletic fields, like you, you know, where the clay, on a, on a baseball field where the clay meets the grass, it forms a lip, like a high area. We roll those down. Sometimes in the spring after. Freeze thaw cycles, the, you know, uneven ground on soccer fields, we can use it on those to kind of level those out. The bocce courts, we, you know, we can use them down there, use it for the bocce courts that we, we roll every couple of weeks for the seniors. The, the parking lots, we've been having Public Works help us with that. We'll be able to do it with this roller when we add stone to like the potholes, you know, for example, Jagger's Beach. We can use it for that. So it will be used a lot, especially in the spring and fall.
Do we have one now?
It's a small one, so one ton. This is bigger. The one ton really isn't heavy enough to do the work. And that one we got, I think, around nineteen ninety-four, so it's old and it's not as beefy, it's not as much weight. This one's two point eight tons. The one we have now is one ton, so it's a big difference.
Any other, any other questions for Rick?
Will Public Works be able to share it? I mean, it just doesn't, you're talking sixty thousand dollars between the trailer and the machine. Is this something that Public Works will be able to utilize too? I mean, it just doesn't. I don't know. I guess if the last one lasted twenty or thirty years, it probably makes some sense, so. I don't know, I guess if the last one lasted 20 or 30 years, it probably makes some sense, so.
Yeah, again, the one we have now is around 1994, so it's, we've had a long time.
Yeah, it lasted 20 or 30 years.
Yeah.
And Tom, Tom, would that roller be of any value to you at any point?
Yeah, that would be of value to me, because a lot of times, I'm, right now, I'm sharing with Park and Rec, and sometimes it's a little bit inconvenient, we have to schedule stuff. I would rather, if they have a, an extra role like that, I could use it too, sometimes, even when I'm, had the other one out, because we do quite a bit of that, and that's vibratory too, right, Rick?
I believe so, yep.
Okay, yep, so definitely be of use to me.
Oh, you got a motion already, right? Not yet, is there a motion to approve as described in the memo? The four items? The four items, sure.
Sure, I'll make a motion in a second.
One second.
Any further comments or questions? Let me try your mind, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Post, stand, recusals, hearing none, motion carries. Rick, thank you very much.
Hey, thank you.
All right. I'm not sure I see Pete here. Peter on this, I think he's, I think he's conflicted with probate court this morning. So this is consideration of, and take possible action on the award of bid number one dash 2122 office supplies. And the recommendation is, this is the recommendation was supported by the selectmen's staff in addition to the finance organization. And it is basically for office, office supplies, and we've been using W.B. Mason for some time, and they, they seem to have the best pricing and options for us relative to available, the, the things that we need off of that, that contract.
And there's a comparison quote.
Yeah.
W.B. Mason.
Right.
Appears favorable.
Yes.
What are you looking at, Mark? I'm not saying you, dollar amounts online.
Yeah, I think it's sort of a blanket, the, uh, sort of the.
It's more than discounts.
It's a discount.
So, so what's the magnitude that we're talking about here for all the supplies?
Yes, it's, it's not, not overly.
Yeah, the reason I'm asking is that the board of ed, you know, it's the items individual, it saves money doing it that way, but if it's just this small.
Their bond, their bond is gonna get multishaped.
I'm sure, I'm sure it is, in that case, it wouldn't make any sense.
Town hall, or is this just for his office?
This is for the town office, all, all the town offices, not for the board of ed, but all the town.
So here, on Town Hall South?
Yeah.
I, I'd make the motion.
There you go.
Second.
Any further comments or questions? Let me try your mind, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Post, stand, recusals, hearing none, motion carries. Okay. All right. Item eight, appointments and resignations, eight dot one, act on resignation of Tracy Brent Calafiore from the Economic Development Commission effective September 8, 2021. Is there a motion with appreciation and regret?
Some vote.
In a second. Second. Uh, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Post, stand, recusals, hearing none, motion carries. Eight dot two, act on the resignation of Amy Earls, also from the Economic Development Commission, with appreciation and regret. I'll make that motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
And we try your minds, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Post, stand, recusals, hearing none, motion carries. Eight dot three, act on a recommendation to appoint Mark Wasserman as an alternate to the zoning board of appeals, to fill a vacancy for a term to expire March, February 28, 2023. I'll make that motion, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Post, stand, recusals, hearing none, motion carries. Item nine, request for use of town property, nine dot one, act on a request from the First Congregational Church to use the green, to place a sign on the green advertising its International Day of Peace ceremony taking place September 21, 2021, with a sign placement of September 7 through the 21st, is there a motion?
Some vote.
And a second?
Second.
Uh, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Post, stand, recusals, hearing none, motion carries. Act on a request from the Guilford Performing Arts Festival to place a sign on the green advertising its 2021 festival taking place.
Was there gonna be, excuse me, Matt, was there gonna be two separate votes with the church, one to use the green and one to place a sign?
Matt said both.
Oh, you said both, I'm sorry.
Yeah. He said use the green and place a sign.
Nevermind, sorry.
Thank you for.
That's all right, thank you for being wrong, said.
So this is, act on a request from Guilford Performing Arts Festival to place a sign on the green advertising its 2021 festival taking place September 24 to 26, 2021, as well as a sign placement, nine 12 to nine 26, is there a motion?
Yeah, make a motion.
And a second?
Second.
And secondly, try your minds, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Post, stand, recusals, hearing none, motion carries. I got three, act on a request from the Guilford High School girls swim and dive team, place a sign on the green advertising its shred event taking place October 2nd, 2021, with sign placement on September 7 through 10 to October 2nd. Is there a motion?
Some vote.
And a second?
Second.
Let me try your minds, all in favor?
Hi. Hi.
Hi. Post, stand, recusals, hearing none, motion carries. Uh, item 10, committee reports. Nothing at this point. I'm assuming we should start to hear something on.
I, I just, I just talked to George last week, and they're just in the process.
Got it. Okay, item 11, correspondence. Correspondence for planning and zoning related to drive-through restaurants, accessory apartments, and cannabis retail establishments. Did everyone have a chance to take a look at the, the email from Phil Johnson? Okay, well, let's, let's tackle them in, in the order that they showed up on his memo, which is cannabis. Obviously, we heard some comments earlier today on cannabis. One of the things that was written into the legislation is that municipalities can't take any legislative, formal legislative action until October 1st, relative to some of the prohibitions, et cetera, is, that's my understanding. So I've asked Pete to take a look at the, the language in, in the legislation. So, and, and to see what we can and cannot do relative to the authorization or, as was requested earlier today, consideration for ban. I think the, the, the ban would be an ordinance as opposed to amending the zoning code. I have some philosophical challenges with using the zoning code to affect social policy. There, 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 there are some examples that are pretty well-known relative to zoning restrictions to keep certain groups of people from being able to participate as everyone else would. So I, I have some challenges along those lines. So I, if we're gonna do anything relative to, to cannabis and marijuana that would restrict the use, I would prefer to do that via ordinance.
It makes more sense.
Is that?
Yeah.
Everybody on the same page?
It's, and it's a larger conversation than just throw, I don't mean that you were, but just putting it off to P and Z.
Exactly.
It's, it's much more global.
It's not where, how.
I agree with that completely and, and to, you know, their point this morning, you know, that, that's our job, I mean, the leadership of it all. And, and I appreciate where you're coming from, the social side of it all, and I don't want to inject my personal leanings, but I, I do think, you know, it deserves a bigger discussion, and through an ordinance, you know, we can have some forums and some public opinion or meetings and that type of thing, and, and really air it out, so it isn't anybody's personal agenda or group's agenda. But I do think the point of leadership is very real. Should we should move forward with it, and, you know, can we start the process before October 1st?
Yes, we can, we can, we can start the process, just one of the things that I, I've had a couple of meetings with both Bo and Lisa, most recently last, last Monday. Actually, not them, during the legislative session where they were talking about this. Wow, and, and one of the things that I shared with them was I, I'm usually pretty, pretty close to what's going on in this community, having been on, on, on the finance for so long as I and it was a surprise to me when I came into the office.
Yeah.
Legislation talking about legalization for the last year. For me to discover that we had a ban on medical care. I would, I, I must have been asleep, I did not know that had been affected. And I, and as I said to Bo and Lisa and Peter, this, this.
Okay.
require a community conversation.
All righty.
This is not something that I think is, that we relegate to the planning and zoning, and it, it, it doesn't have widespread. I think we have some tools at our disposal to, to gauge community reaction, particularly that Zen City software that we use to analyze social media stuff. They, the Safe Streets Task Force has utilized a polling tool that they have, which we could certainly, which we could certainly take advantage of. So I, I, I think this is an issue that we need to engage in community, and we'll, we'll start to.
Yeah, and I think, you know, this board, you know, should lead the discussion. We, you know, we have bans on plastic bags, we have bans on pornography, and this is a valid subject for discussion and exploration. So to your point, I, I do think it's a, it's a community decision, but we as a board have to lead that, right?
Yeah, and now, there, there may be some timelines relative to businesses coming in and, and forcing their hand in terms of applications, but they can't actually start doing this until sometime in 2022, so.
Yeah.
So I think we have some, I think we have some time, but that will evaporate quickly, so.
I, I'd want to hear from all the, all the sta-, as many stakeholders as possible.
Right.
Um, I mean, it was tremendous presentation this morning, that's useful. I think sometimes you learn more from the opposition position or the range of positions about, you know, coming to the right outcome, and so I think it's really useful to have a lot, as much public input as we possibly can. And I do agree with everybody that said it, this is the right place to do it, not drop it down the zoning.
Yeah, because it, it, I'm, I'm aware of developments in Massachusetts, and there are some towns and some, I guess, governing authorities within the towns that view cannabis, cannabis sales and businesses as very advantageous to the town because they can attach taxes to it and revenue. So there's bound to be people that feel differently from the group that came today. So that's why it has to be a, a, a global, it's a good for conversation, you know?
Yeah.
And that's exactly the kind of discussion that I think we have to have, I mean, you know, would, you know, economics really drive it, is that where we want to go?
3% tax on it that we would get, which is gonna be negligible.
Right.
And by the way, based on the statutes, my understanding, we'd only be entitled to have one outlet, one retail outlet, based on our population. So, what I'm, what I'm talking about, and, and I will also say, in fairness to folks who presented today, I, I push back on some stuff with them in some of those meetings, in particular, you know, why marijuana and alcohol? There, there were dry towns in this, in this state for, and throughout, I think there are still some that are, that are dry towns, right? I also push back on, you know, it's gonna be available, potentially available in Branford or Madison, or Branford, or whatever. How is that gonna, and, and by the way, assumes that, you know, because it's regulated and only goes under 20, over 21 typically use it, you know, our, our, our kids aren't gonna be able to walk into those stores and buy it. So, and, and it's gonna, they're gonna be able to get it, and I asked some questions about, you know, what does that do to the black market? Excuse that, excuse that expression, that's probably one I should learn to get rid of, right? But, you know, the, the the illicit trade, right? How does that impact that, that, that type of business? So there, there are a lot of things I think we need to have conversations about.
For sure, yeah.
But the state legislation made it clear that it was up to each, each individual town, didn't they?
Absolutely.
Yes, that's not always a part of legislation, is it? Explicit statements, that's very interesting.
Preemption is usually the law, you know, preemption works its own way, you know the term better than I do, works its way all the way up to federal level. State can require certain things.
Yeah.
And, and where charters conflict, state law, state law.
Well, it'd be an interesting factor to a federal law.
Well, that's, that's, that's very obvious, right?
It's complicated. Other point I want to make is that we have a lot of expertise here, here in town, on our own boards and commissions, and youth and family services and board of ed people are closer to the impact of all this on kids than we are. So definitely a community conversation.
Right, right, and I think it's, I think it's worth noting that the group that's advocating for this is not naive enough to suggest that it's not gonna be available here in the community. But they specifically say, including remarks on a letter that was sent to all of us, we request a ban as a message to govern parents and kids, that marijuana consumption is a significant health risk for kids. Lisa touched briefly on it, was one of the questions I asked her was, you know, how have we done so well on the alcohol side over the years? She says it's largely because of the efforts of DARE programs and laws against drunk driving, messaging that's consistently out there in the, in the community. So they, that's why they see a higher percentage of risk with alcohol than they did with marijuana. But I always, I always thought that the DARE program combined everything, right? Drugs, alcohol, cigarettes.
I, I think she missed the biggest point of what, you know, on the alcohol side is the police, I mean, it needs, you know, there are stops all, all over every community, every state, and all over the state. You know, that, that level of policing doesn't exist yet, cannabis, because they, they can't measure. When, when they get to that measuring, maybe that'll go the direction of, of alcohol. But I, I personally, you know, while those other programs are good at getting the message, you know, the policing drives it home very quickly.
Does.
The DUI can affect, you know, your life very quickly.
I'm, I'm aware that some municipalities have jumped out early and done temporary bans until they can forge through the, the legal entanglements, which is something we might want to consider as.
Yeah.
In some ways, it's more, excuse me, in, in some ways, it's almost more fair to a prospective business who wants to do that, so they don't invest too much time, energy, and money.
Exactly.
And that, so, sorry.
No, and there's a sentence in Mr. Johnson's email too, in the absence of a prohibition, the PCC will proceed with updating our zoning regulations. So we don't want anything to happen.
Well, yeah, I'm saying exactly, there's no reason why we can't have input in that discussion, too. But I think just this general discussion right now proves the point that this needs wider discussion, and, and I, I, I would be very much in favor of we're gonna hold on things until that discussion has.
All right, the second one.
Is that a message we can send them, do we have to do?
I, 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 well, I don't think we can actually take a, a vote on that, because there's supposed to be a
It's not really on the.
Chinese law, that we don't, we're not supposed to be making, running into any policy.
Right.
But I think the message is, we're, we would consider doing it via ordinance. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, these, these three points in the email aren't really agenda items. I mean, they're, the, the letter itself is on the agenda, but there might be people who wanted info who couldn't be here, so.
And then, you know, the second one is drive-through restaurant regulations. I think we, we've seen at least a couple of applications recently, one was from the Dunkin' Donuts, which was approved by Planning and Zoning. Former Bobby Bear property.
Is this what he says, a recent change, it's unchanged for the last, in close to 78 to 50, that's what he started off?
Yep.
Okay, yeah.
And I think it's.
It was, it was a case by case deal, though, I mean, they had, that, that particular person had to apply for that, and I think, from what I understand, because I I had this particular person who doesn't want it, so I've heard a lot about it, but anyway. That, they were granted the variance, but there's still a number of permissions and applications that have, it, it isn't a done deal. They got that one variant, so they could go forward with the application. So.
It's an exception to policy.
Right.
Exceptions are possible, but you gotta jump through.
Right, you, you were on, I know, you, I shouldn't speak, because I'm, I'm just a listener.
So the question, you know, the question is largely, you know, we feel as if extending drive-through availability to all commercial zones except the Guilford Green, those are the current regulations.
I personally think I think what we have in place now is working, you know, we're not saying no, but we're saying you gotta work for it.
Right, and I think there's a pending application over by the Knowles Brothers for the property that was formerly the Starbucks next to the place.
Oh, yeah.
We opened up.
Wait, but that's Starbucks, uh, no, there was no, there was a drive around. There was, there was a road around the back of it, but there was no drive through.
I realize it's very careful of unintended consequences if you were opening up the potential possibility to all, you know, commercial zones. You'll realize ideas that can pop up.
Yeah.
Okay. And if it is, you know, I know it's difficult from an economic development perspective, but it's, uh, I, I think it's important from a community and quality of life perspective to.
There, there's an intermediate, and this isn't really on the table here, but there's an intermediate position, which is the, the fairly restrictive area on the west side of Route One where the drive-throughs are allowed now has worked for a long time. And rather than just say, we're going to go from that very restrictive, which it is, scheme to just let's let it go everywhere. You could sort of carve out additional areas where it might make some sense.
That's where you get trouble.
Over the last twenty years, you know, and you could have. I understand. I, I, but so that's a long, complicated discussion with a lot of expert opinions and it's something that we should address. But there are possible universes where.
Especially coming off the pandemic. I mean, it, you know, in the social world, it's almost more acceptable now to use drive-through.
And, and you know, it's not just restaurants. It's, it's banks and drugstores and, you know, which I just don't, I mean, I'm saying that in a positive way, not a negative way. So.
Actually, I think there are some carve out for banks already beyond that, beyond that restaurant drive through area. So Starbucks is a perfect example. How many Starbucks open and then close within three years? I mean, it's kind of unusual. And that failed, my guess is if you ask them, they didn't have to drive through. Some of these places have a huge, I'm not saying they're open to floodgates.
But if they drive through in the back.
Not that Starbucks on that one.
Wasn't a drive-through. That was just.
You can drive around the building.
To get out.
Right. But there was no drive-through window.
And I think there's, I don't know for sure, but I think that there's some challenges with that property.
Might be.
Creating another lane because of the weapons behind it. There's all.
That's right.
But I was on P and Z at that point. There is some struggle in the back there, but I thought, I thought they'd overcome that, that there was, but.
So is this an P and Z now?
Yeah.
To me it is.
This one might be more for them. That's true.
Yeah.
Uh, all right. The last one is accessory apartments, uh, significant changes at the state level with respect to accessory apartments. And I think diversified housing stock, most significant changes related to loud use by right, a reduction in parking requirement and no requirement for privacy in one of the two units. Uh, the town has the ability to opt out of the, these state regulations by action of more select and P and Z. I think it has to be done by January one, twenty twenty-two. Doubt, doubt, but my initial inclination is to not opt out of those requirements.
No. Agreed. No, no, not, not in what are other ways of thinking about housing and accessory. This would be antithesis, you know? But I, I did sort, you, you were probably maybe going to address this. I wouldn't mind having a meeting with George and Phil though, just maybe to talk about it a little bit. There, there's, there's a lot of people, well, I shouldn't say a lot. There's a number of people in town who really are very interested in expanding accessory apartments or, or not necessarily having more, but letting them be a little bit bigger, you know, kinds of the things that have come up. So I think it's something that would be a good thing for us to.
Absolutely. I think, you know, I've shared some correspondence, yeah, I've had a number of correspondents, uh, you know, the Airbnb phenomenon and I think there's some potential issues building with, with that type of thing that deserve further discussion. So I agree with Sandy that maybe that might be a, whether it be a committee meeting or a forum, something. But I think there's some, there's a lot of discussion. Yeah, there's.
And Charlie, just to follow up on the conversation you and I had last week, I did receive a call from an individual about that, that, that Airbnb arrangement over, over by Grass Island. So I will, that's already before and along to George for the Gregor. Okay. All right. So we'll, we'll tee something up on the agenda. Maybe we've got some time on this one, I think, right? So maybe we do the first, uh, the first meeting in October, we'll tee up Phil and, and George to come in and talk about this very issue and, and other related, uh, housing, these type of housing, uh, issues. Um, okay. I think we've already worked through the, the day piece, the correspondence from Dave related to the ban retail marijuana establishments. Okay. All right. Uh, new business. We've got Tom, you're being very patient. All right. Uh, thirteen, we got two items to add for Tom and Public Works to be thirteen, one, thirteen, two. They are discussed and take possible action to purchase a two freightliner tandem axle plow trucks off the state contract number fourteen PSX zero two three nine. And then add to the agenda, consider take possible action contract with Savvy and Sons to line thirty-six inch pipe lining on Briarwood Drive. Is there a motion to add those two?
Second.
Uh, let me try your minds. All in favor?
All right.
Those are staying accused us here in motion carries. Tom, thirteen dot one, the freightliner tandem axle plow trucks off the state contract.
Yep. Okay. Um, we came out with outfit in these trucks. Uh, the last two trucks that we will be having the ten wheelers like that. So you'll be, it'll be a while before we need any, any of these dump trucks again. We had five hundred sixty thousand funded for them. Uh, we are going to trade in a one-ten truck for fourteen thousand dollars. And that comes out to five hundred and thirty-four thousand, six hundred and ninety-seven dollars and eighteen cents is what the cost would be uh, for the two trucks.
Okay. Comments or questions?
Uh, Tom, I'm noticing a little evolution away from Max towards the freight liners. Is that a dollar's sense issue or any other driving factor in that?
It's dollars and cents, but also we feel that they, they compete now with Mac. All these trucks are kind of not whole anymore, like Mac's not all Mac parts anymore and like that. So we like the, the visibility of, of the trucks that, that we get and also they're easier to work on. So that's the reason why we, we've stuck with a freight liner.
All right. I, I just remembered some of the new equipment, you know, we also had to buy, you know, software and that type of thing. But that transition has been fairly straightforward.
Yes, yes, it has.
Okay.
Matter of fact, my brother Pete is now a foreman over there for Freightliner. So it makes it even easier when we need something.
I think you wanted to say.
That just made it a lot easier, didn't it?
Well, they, somebody at least is going to answer the phone when, when we call on issues, right?
Exa- exactly. Not only that, like, like I said, uh, you know, he's totally up on everything. He also teaches now over there. So it's another benefit for us in the future. And also with these, uh, with these trucks comes a seventy year, a hundred thousand mile warranty on the, the engine. And then there's a five, five year on the Allison transmission and two years towing. So we, we get those benefits also.
Excellent. All right. So, and I'd like to see here that you're trading in one of the old trucks, uh, and picking up some, uh, some cash for that fourteen thousand. And you mentioned earlier in your preamble that this would suit, uh, put us in pretty good shape. We would not need to be purchasing trucks for some time. Uh, is that right? Did I hear that correctly?
Yeah, yes, 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 you did. It, this is the end of the line, you know, pretty much where we're set up for a little while. I mean, maybe three years, three or four years probably. The only other thing other coming up would be a new sweeper and that's, that's about it really.
Good.
Is there, is there some, uh, either availability or other time crunch on, on, on this equipment? Or is these, these operating outside of the, out of the market that private vehicles are? I mean, if we miss this window right now, is it going to cause any significant delay?
Uh, yeah, if we miss this window, um, the trucks are hard to get at this point, period. You know, you're into the, you know, to try to get them online like that, it's, it'd be another year or two, the way things are going.
Right. And what's the delivery time once we say yes?
I think it's late February.
Okay. And, and the, the way you presented to us is a, is this quote, and it's very thorough. Did you, did you comparison shop?
As far as.
Or is this a state contract?
This is off the state.
This is, this is state bid price. Yeah.
Okay.
Good. That helps. Okay. Um, is there a motion to approve the purchase of two Freightliner tandem axle plow trucks off the state contract? The total price to be.
Five thirty-four.
Yeah.
Five thirty-four, six ninety-seven, eighteen. Yep.
Is there a motion? You meant that Lou?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Exactly. Uh, try your minds. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose, stay, accuse us, hearing non-motion carries.
It's remarkable how expensive, I mean.
Incredible.
People, you know, during taxis and reelection season, you get into discussions and don't realize, you know, it's cost money.
Well, it's also incredible how much use these things get though over, you know.
I, I understand that part. It's just, you know, when we talk about, you know, whether or not we pay these out of operating or a bond of that type of thing, uh, these are, these are investments in the community.
No question.
I don't understand it. It's a, it's a big investment. It's like our schools and everything else.
Absolutely. Okay. Um, Tom, uh, item two, uh, contract with Savvy and Sons to line thirty-six inch pipe on Briarwood Drive. Want to talk a little bit about this, please?
Yep. Um, when we're looking to do Briarwood next year, we had to start off with checking the catch basins and then the pipes that are, are going through. And we found out that the thirty-six inch pipe, that's, uh, probably three quarters of the way down on, on Briarwood. It's, uh, it handles obviously quite a bit of water and we noticed that there's decay on, towards the bottom of the pipe. So I questioned the fact of using this new process of a flexible liner. It's a resin line. They use resin on the liner and it's, uh, it's made out of polyester and, uh, something else. And, and, uh, how they use this thing is, is first of all, they would use a floatable grout to fix the bottom of the pipe. Cause I asked them about that, how they would fix the bottom of the pipe so that it would make it whole. They use a float, a floatable grout on the bottom that would seal the pipe. Then they come with this tube, the flexible tube liner that's coated with resin and sealed on both ends. They pressurize it to three hundred pounds and with a heat, the heat source is steam at the three hundred degrees. And then they cut the ends at, once sort of complete, they cut the ends out and it makes, it makes its own pipe inside a pipe. Probably roughly about almost, uh, I think five eighths thick and it has a guarantee of ten years on it. And what the guy says, more like thirty. And, uh, the only reason I'm, I'm going with this process is because of the location. When you come down to that area, there, it slopes way off. There's hardly any shoulder there whatsoever. Then it goes to a head wall. And there's, that road there is only one way out. And at this point, as we look at the road, we're going to try to make an attachment to Han as long as we can get that approved. So there'd be two ways out. But to excavate this pipe is ten feet down. And doing an excavation that deep would require a longer time before you wanted to pave the road because of settlement. So in talking to some other people too, Mark Larkin said also, you know, is, understands this type of stuff. And he also thought that it was a good idea because we're not affecting uh, the compaction of the road at that point there when we put a new road on top. And the fact that when you look at all the costs together of getting a trench box and not being able to work in that area and then the steel plates and emergency vehicles and the whole deal, this is a, a smarter way to go about this particular location. So the cost would be twenty-eight thousand, six hundred fifty-two dollars. Um, if, if they do everything on it, but I talked to them about us redirecting the water. I've already been to wetlands for this, um, doing the traffic control and assistant in the placement, uh, because we have to pull that liner through to say they would need another machine on the other side. So they asked if we would help out with that to cut costs. So by doing so, that would cut it down to twenty-four thousand, two hundred dollars. And that's really the sole source in this state here. They're the only company in the state. And I looked outward and Nashville Pipe Cleaning out in New Jersey is the closest one. And their cost was higher. Their costs ended up being like five hundred and fifty-nine dollars a foot to line this type of pipe. And the reason why it could cost us so high is because the equipment that's needed, it's really high tech equipment that. So, you know, if you end up doing more, that you actually have a benefit. But at this particular point, we only need to do that, that pipe. But as I go along, I did have some of my men checking the pipes. I didn't physically check the pipes myself, which I will be doing. So just to let you know that in case I see something, it would be a smaller pipe, more of a fifteen inch pipe if that was the case to do later on. So this is just an option that I'm leaving open to that we may need to do one more pipe.
All right, Tom. Thank you. Um, so this sounds like this is a relatively new technology or has it been around for a long time or?
It's, it's been around quite a while, um, but there's not too many companies that do it, number one. And I, and again, it's been used a lot more on smaller pipes, like sewer pipes and stuff like that, as a really quick fix in tight spots. And it's, uh, has a good, uh, good average with it. So.
How big is the pipe that we're talking about?
Thirty-six inches. Three feet, right?
And when you, you go, you were talking about fifteen inch. Are you saying that if we didn't go with this, you would replace it with a fifteen inch?
Oh, no, 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 no. I say, I said, I had my men check some of these pipes, but I didn't physically check them myself. I did check that one. So I need to check the other pipes and if needed, some of the other pipes, there's fifteen inch pipes, the smaller pipes that may need that. Um, but until I check them, I won't know. So I'm just putting this on a slate that I may be coming back for, you know, a couple of other pipes if that's the case.
What's the length of this pipe that we're talking about compared?
The length, it, it's only seventy feet, the length. And I know that sounds like a lot, but in comparison, when I've talked to other people that have done it, this is the, the, the cost that you have. And like I said, the point is the location. I would have a lot of difficulty with not, people not being able to get out, number one, emergency vehicles getting in, number two. Even how to set my machines because there's a drop off both sides. And, 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 uh, there's no room over there for anybody to pass during the time. This here is trenchless. They go down through, through the pipe and that's it. There's no cutting the road, period.
And, and what happens if this pipe doesn't get fixed? Like what's, why is this urgent?
Well, the, the bob of the pipe is starting to fail and so the integrity of the pipe is gone. So it would need replacement no matter which way you look at it, if it's replacement or lining.
How much of this pipe has been inspected? I mean, if seventy feet, you can see in maybe ten or fifteen feet from both ends. Has the, has the pipe been inspected for its entire length?
Yes, in this particular spot it has. And I had my guys checking the catch basins and checking the pipes uh, that up, up this, up the road is, it's all concrete, which usually you don't have any issues whatsoever. Down at the lower end, on the southern end is where the corrugated pipes have been used. And there's going to be throughout town, they used them years ago and they, they, they failed. They only last so long, they rust out. So I would have to check the rest of these pipes myself. I want to physically check them myself.
My concern is that if this is a thirty-six inch pipe, you know, if it's been inspected, that's fine. I would be concerned that somewhere within the center of the pipes or, or this land, that there is some structural issues because if this is like a five eighths or a one inch thick lining or whatever, that's not going to prevent a structural failure. That will, this is going to prevent leaks and deterioration. But it's certainly not going to be, uh, able to prevent a structural failure. So I'm. So I would want to make sure, it, it sounds like you've already done it, but I want to make sure that seventy foot length of this pipe has been inspected so that in the middle of it, we don't have a potential structural failure that I don't think this would fix.
No, you're, you're, you're right. And I, I, I physically looked at this pipe. I brought the guys down from, uh, Savvy's and Sons. They looked at the pipe and I said, is this something that is feasible for you, you know, or is this something that pull out and go, no? This is, uh, typical for them. And they said that they would guarantee it structurally. You know, because I asked about the thickness of that too, but I guess this resin, the high resin that they, they use for this particular thing with the, like the fiberglass polyester type, uh, uh, liner is become structurally strong enough to hold it. And, and I also, usually when you have a pipe that's down in a deep area over the years, it's been how many years now? Probably thirty-five years anyways. Um, usually even if a pipe rusts out, usually at that point, it usually, the, the ground is so compact in that spot. It usually does hold itself. Um, but I'm just being, you know, I see there's an issue there and I want to address it.
Okay, uh, so Tom, you want us to approve the twenty-four thousand, two hundred, uh, because you're going to move forward with doing that, uh, that work?
Yes, I am. I, like I said, we went to Wetlands already and that's approved. And so we will help them along, along with it. Plus I want, uh, my men to see the process at, at the same time.
Um, what are we using? Where are the funds on this? Is it some road, road maintenance funds?
Yes, uh, more likely inland road, uh, reconstruction, because this was, uh, Briarwood was part of that on the inland. Going the road is also one of our.
Um, probably not at this point. I can, we can, we can check, Mary Jane check, but, um, and, and also talk to Janice, but that's typically used for, uh, predefined, uh, projects, lots of funds. Okay, uh, all right. So is there a, uh, motion to approve the expenditure of twenty-four thousand, two hundred, uh, with Savvy and Sons to line thirty-six, uh, thirty-six inch pipe on Briarwood Drive?
Some.
Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, let me try your minds. All in favor? Pose, abstain, accuse us. Thanks, Tom. And let us know how the process works.
Will do. Thank you very much.
It looks, it looks like there's going to be a video, uh, run of the entire, the, the report is pretty detailed, so.
Yeah.
To answer some of Charles's questions. Yeah, thanks.
Okay, take care.
Okay, Tom, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Uh, okay, uh, I think we're at that point, uh. Public forum, anyone wishing to address the board in public forum?
Good to see you, friend.
Yeah, um, if there's nothing known in public forum, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some.
And the second. Undebatable motion, all in favor? Wonderful. Thank you all.